Good evening. I would like to call the Mott Community College Board of Trustees regular meeting from Monday, June 24th, 2024 at 5:30 PM in the MCC Event Center to order. All those that are able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Under additions to the agenda, I would entertain a motion that affixed time at which to adjourn at 8:00 PM this evening and a continuation of the current meeting on July 1st, 2024 at 5:30 PM in the MCC Event Center.
What was that again?
What's that? I would entertain a motion to set a fixed time at which to adjourn at 8:00 PM this evening, and a continuation of the current meeting will be held on July 1st, 2024 at 5:30 PM in the MCC Event Center. We have a...so moved. Do we have a second?
Yes.
Do we have a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Is there discussion?
There's discussion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Discussion. Discussion.
There's no discussion on this.
No discussion?
No. Motion to adjourn in this way is not debatable and goes immediately to a majority vote.
And that's gonna be a big thing.
Roll call vote. Mr. Reyes.
No.
Mr. Chair, can we have Trustee Daly restate the motion, or can you restate that motion just so that I have it down, please?
I would entertain a motion that affixed time to which to adjourn at 8:00 PM and a continuation of the current meeting held on July 1st, 2024 at 5:30 PM at the MCC
So, Trustee Daly would motion to set a fixed time at which to adjourn at 8:00 PM in continuation with the current meeting being held on July 1st, 2024 at 5:00 PM in the...
Five thirty.
Five thirty PM in the MCC Event Center.
That's correct. there's no discussion on this, but I think on this motion, for clarification's sake, so everybody understands where we are, that you might want to consider allowing some limited discussion on the motion prior to the vote. Mr. Freeman?
As we are not discussing anything about this, and I have no idea why it's being done, and we haven't discussed it, absolutely not.
There's no discussion on this, Mr. Freeman.
Not, not. No, I said no. I'm voting no.
It is a yea or nay. Thank you very much. Mr. Reyes?
No.
Sue.
You'll need to turn your microphone on.
Yes.
Mr. Daly.
No.
Wendy?
Out of respect for Dr. Daly, as far as him maybe not being able to handle staying here, this is what I assume this long, my vote is yes.
Yes.
Motion passed. We will adjourn at 8:00 PM.
Mr. Chair, is that a yes from you?
Yes.
Would you like me to state the final vote?
Yes.
All right, so on Trustee Daly's motion to set a fixed time at which to adjourn at 8:00 PM in continuation with the current meeting being held on July 1st, 2024 at 5:30 PM in the MCC Event Center. Trustee Couch seconded the motion, and there are four ayes and three nays. Motion passed.
I would entertain a motion now to release the names of the finalists for interim president and post them on the website.
Point of order.
Yes.
Where is that on the agenda? We're additions to the agenda. We didn't vote on that. We didn't vote on adopting the agenda. Where are we on the agenda that you're bringing these other calls for motions forward?
Things that we will add to the agenda. We're adding this to the agenda, Mr. Reyes.
You're...no, adding it to the agenda would make it where we have it later in the agenda and we can discuss it, not...
So, to place this on the agenda, Mr. Reyes.
You're asking for promotions right now and then demanding that we vote on things that we don't know what's going on, and that's just wrong.
Yes. Okay, so where would you like to place it on the agenda?
I don't care where you place it on the agenda, but you don't ask for a motion right now.
Okay.
We are in additions to the agenda. We are not in what Andy wants.
Okay. Are there any other additions to the agenda? Seeing no additions to the agenda, I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed?
No.
No.
Jordan, were you able to get that?
Mr. Chair, so there was, to my understanding, there was a voice vote, so if you'd like to do a roll call vote on that, we can do that.
Okay, let's do a roll call vote. Mr. Reyes?
No.
Mr. Freeman?
No.
Sue?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Dr. Daly?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, that's five ayes and two nays. The agenda as amended has been adopted.
Thank you. Do we have any communications to the board?
Yes, Mr. Chair. We've had one letter that's been submitted by F. Jack Belzer, PC of Flint, Michigan, dated June 14th, 2024, and it reads on the Charter Township of Monday versus Bishop International Airport Authority, Genesee County Clerk, Genesee County Library, Genesee County Treasurer, Genesee International or Intermediate School District, Mass. Transportation Authority, Mott College, and Carmen Ainsworth Community Schools Circuit Court Case 2412-1017-PZ. And it states, "Dear Sir/Madam enclosed herewith, please find true copies of the petition pursuant to MCL 211.56A affidavit of treasure and request for hearing on motion relative to the above referenced matter. Also enclosed, please find the proposed order to strike unpaid personal property taxes from assessment rolls, which our office will be submitting to the court at the time of the motion hearing, which is scheduled for Monday, July 15th, 2024 at 1:30 PM before Judge Brian Pickle via Zoom. Should you have any questions concerning this letter, please feel free to contact our office at your convenience. Sincerely, F. Jack Belzer."
Thank you. Any questions from the board members regarding the communication? Seeing none. Dr. Daly?
In what capacity was that letter written? What else does Attorney Belzer support sending to the board?
So, it comes from F. Jack Belzer, PC, Attorneys and Counselors at Law at 3153 West Hill Road, Flint, Michigan, 48507.
Does he say...is he representing anybody that's...
I'm sorry. He's representing Carmen Ainsworth Community Schools.
In accordance with Section 1640 of the meeting procedures, Board Policy states that the Board Chairperson shall invite the public to address the Board. All citizens who wish to address the Board or who wish to communicate with the Board in writing shall identify themselves and/or the group they represent, if any. They must also state the reason for addressing the Board. Citizens addressing the Board shall be limited to five minutes in making their remarks unless the time is increased or decreased by consent to the Board. A brief supporting the remarks made by the citizen may be submitted to the Board for its consideration. Do we have any comments from the public?
Yes, Mr. Chair. The first comment has been submitted by Ann Figaroa of Mount Morris, Michigan, and she'll be speaking on the subject of Item 2.23, Interview Process for Interim President.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Would you please ask her to come forward now?
Trustees, one of the agenda items is to discuss the interview process for the interim president. The last meeting, the Personnel Committee presented recommendations for the interview process. One of the items was a grading system. The Personnel Committee had discussions about it and agreed upon what they would be. However, in the board meeting, the Chair of the Personnel Committee voted no because she said she got blasted on social media about her grading of the Board Attorney. While I appreciate the fact, no one wants to be criticized in public. As a trustee, you should do what is right for the college. As of right now, there's no grading system in place for the interviews of the interim president. So I guess the feedback will be something like, "I like him or her. Seems like they answered the questions okay," or the like. A grading system helps the trustees to listen and understand what the candidates are saying. It moves from subjective to objective. It can reveal inconsistency as well as valuable information about the candidate's views. You shouldn't be afraid of being criticized for your decisions if you truly believe in your evaluations and stand up for them and own them. Don't shy away from making decisions. I urge the Board to reconsider their recommendations for the grading system. I urge the Board to reconsider their recommendations for the grading system. It is a human resource best practice and effective tool for evaluation.
Thank you very much. Jordan, are there any other comments from the public?
Yes, Mr. Chair, the next comment has been submitted by Anupa Shanteram of 14, or of Kennebec Road on the inquiry of committee for incoming MCC president.
Good afternoon, members of the MCC Board of Trustees, faculty, and the community. I am inquiring if there will be a committee established for the hiring of the new MCC president. As we embark on this crucial process, I believe it is essential to have a dedicated committee to ensure thorough, incisive, and transparent search and selection procedure. The establishment of a committee is vital for several reasons. One, diverse perspectives. A committee, excuse me, a committee composed of representatives from various stakeholders such as faculty, staff, students, and alumni can provide diverse perspectives ensuring that the chosen candidate aligns with the wide-ranging needs and values of our community. Two, transparency and trust. A structured and inclusive process fosters transparency, therefore building trust within the community and ensuring the selection process, process is perceived as fair and equitable. Three, thorough evaluation. A committee allows for a more rigorous vetting process, including multiple rounds of interviews and assessments, which is crucial for making a well-informed decision. I am confident that forming a committee will significantly benefit our institution as we seek a leader who can uphold and advance MCC's missions and values. As a newly appointed DEI Commissioner for the Genesee County, a MCC alumni, a former early childhood professor of faculty from this institution, and my family's generous donation, excuse me, and my family's generous donor contributions that are continuous to this institution, including my grandfather's Marine, the Roy-Bod, and Rajika Paul Student Life Center, I am very interested in serving on this committee and look forward to your response, and I am willing to assist in any capacity during this important transition. Thank you for your consideration for this suggestion.
Thank you very much. Jordan, are there any other comments from the public?
Yes, Mr. Chair, the next comment has been submitted by Joan Mendy of Swartz Creek, Michigan, and she is speaking on the subject of potential environmental and work, health, worker health hazards regarding semiconductor megasite plants.
Sorry. Hello, my name is Joanne Mendy, and I am a resident of Mundy Township. Thank you for allowing this time for public comment. I'm here to give some substantial reasons why Mott Community College should retract their support of the proposed advanced manufacturing megasite in Mundy Township. Mott Community College is listed as one of 20 entities that support the Flint Genesee Economic Alliance. I'd like to present some technical information, and without inundating anybody, I will also leave cards here that say "No Megasite" on them, and there is a QR code where it leads us to our website, nomegasite.com, and everything talked about today is cited in that website. There are toxic materials that are used in chip manufacturing. You hear a lot about the word PFAS. It's an acronym for polyfluoralkali substances, and they are used abundantly since the 1940s. Many of you will remember Teflon. Abundance does not equate to safety, as evidenced by the disaster of Teflon several decades ago. Chip manufacturers use PFAS in their manufacturing process. During wastewater dumping, these chemicals and to our groundwater and our water sources become contaminated due to the long carbon chain of chemicals, therefore they are commonly referred to as forever chemicals. It is interesting to note, while everyone says the EPA has our backs, the EPA only established safe drinking water levels of PFAS in March of 2023, and even the EPA noted, "We need more data." The Semiconductor Industry Association conducted a huge survey and found that workers are also subject to hazardous environments. The PFAS are worked in a powder form at room temperature, they are a skin irritant as well as a respiratory irritant, and while some may say workers are gowned head to toe in what's considered a biohazard outfit, the workers also suffer from high anxiety and also have high suicidal rates because of working in a chip manufacturing plant. You might ask why we're talking about a chip manufacturing plant, while we all know the auto industry has reduced their production of electric vehicles, so the likelihood of an electric vehicle battery plant is probably out of the question, so the move will be toward a semiconductor plant. The study by the SIA noted that female workers are subject to premature terminations of pregnancies within the first trimester. Cancer is an apparent risk. Also, children born to female workers were found to have an elevated risk of cancer. More surprising, children born to male workers, that is, a child whose father was employed in a chip manufacturing plant, found more than a casual relationship of infancy due to congenital malformations, especially heart defects. The demand for semiconductors causes new requirements for raw materials such as gallium and germanium. The United States has no sizable germanium deposits, which requires us to import all of this from overseas, primarily China. This makes the manufacturing plant subservient to a communist country. China's transitioning to a political power instead of an economic manufacturing power, along with increasing trade tensions with the United States, could have a negative effect on obtaining materials, thus leaving a newly constructed chip manufacturing plant a ghost town. In conclusion, we are concerned about the health hazards and permanent groundwater pollution due to the toxic materials. Guidelines for safe PFAS levels are still under study, and the EPA has recognized this. Reproductive health issues, as noted by the SIA study, are alarming and deadly. We are asking you, the Board of Mott Community College, to retract your support of the megasite proposed for Mundy Township as shown on the Flint Genesee Economic Alliance webpage. Due to respecting your, uh, sit, your positions here at the table, I will leave these business cards that say nomegasite.com, and you can refer to those for all the technical citations. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jordan, do we have any other comments?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have another comment that's been submitted by Sue DeShaw of Swartz Creek, and she'll be speaking on the subject of the Mundy, Mundy megasite.
There you go. Hi, I'm Sue. I live in Swartz Creek, which is Gaines Township. I'm four miles from this megasite. This megasite is a two-mile radius and over a thousand acres. Including in that thousand acres, you have seven subdivisions, three mobile home parks, three daycares, one elementary school, one group home, and three churches, all within that site. In October 23, our group walked through those seven subdivisions, gathering signatures for a moratorium to place a hold on whatever progress was going to happen in that megasite for one year. We did this in six weeks. We were able to gather 10% of adult population signatures, which consisted of 1,200 signatures, along with an additional 400 of surrounding, signatures for the surrounding areas. The Board denied that petition, saying it was not a binding petition, but it did wake up the residents. Tyler, from the Flint Economic Alliance, was quoted in an article saying that 14 people were in favor and two were not of this site. We did our own polls. Now gather, we had 133 people from Facebook, 95 were opposed, 111 people from the next-door site, 63 were opposed. The estimated cost of this project, according to Corning, Inc., is $900 million in capable investments, creating 1,151 jobs for $9 million. To accomplish this, the state will destroy a thousand acres of usable pristine crop land which happens to be used at this moment. They're going to uproot families, demolish their homes in the worst economy we have, along with generational farms. They're going to displace and destroy wildlife, and there's a strong potential, like Joanne said, of pollute the land, air, and water at the site and the surrounding areas. This area has endured Berlin and Farrel, the Chevy and the Hole, and the Flint Water Crisis. We're pretty tired of all the crises. The residents are scared, they're angry, they're frustrated, they have no place to go, nobody that'll listen to them, and they don't feel like anybody's representing them. There's a whole lot of people representing the Michigan economic site. We realize that you are one of the 20 organizations, and we do implore for you to reconsider, or at least just listen to the people. They need to hear the voice of the people, the actual people, not the filtered voice of the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Jordan, are there any other comments from the public?
Yes, Mr. Chair, the next comment's been submitted by Shirley Burchett of Swartz Creek, and she'll be speaking on the topic of Mundy Township Advanced Manufacturing Site.
Good evening. The semiconductor industry has a doubt, well-documented history, starting in Silicon Valley, of polluting the environment, harming workers, as well as community residents. Silicon Valley is littered with more superfund sites than any other county in the United States. These sites are so contaminated that the federal government has put them on national priorities list for cleanup. The chip industry is notorious for keeping its toxic chemical information secret and a history of introducing new chemicals and other production materials without evaluating their toxicity. The federal government acknowledges its safety standards for toxic chemicals are outdated and inadequate. Former OSHA Director David Michaels estimates 90% of OSHA's permissible exposure levels date to industry standards of the 1960s and are not safe. There is huge disparity between what regulators consider permissible and what science tells us are safe exposure limits. The EPA has been working to clean up groundwater at an Intel site in California since 1982, and the work will still take many decades to get to safe levels of the carcinogen TCE. At the Arizona Taiwanese Semiconductor Manufacturing Site, there was a chemical truck explosion last month. The driver was inspecting the tank for a potential problem when an uncontrolled pressure release occurred, causing him to be struck by a blunt object thrown 20 feet. He died from his injuries. In the past two years, Samsung's semiconductor facility in Austin, Texas spilled hundreds of thousands of gallons of toxic wastewater, including sulfuric and hydrochloric acid, into neighboring bodies of water that flow into the Colorado River. In addition to the other advanced manufacturing possibility that Joanne mentioned earlier, is a lithium battery plant, which is also very toxic with its mining and manufacturing. Earlier today, you might have seen that the Aerocell Lithium Battery Plant in South Korea had a deadly fire breakout with at least 20 people killed. Lithium batteries are known to explode or catch fire due to what is described as thermal run, which can occur when they overheat or are punctured. Lithium batteries burn fast and hot, and fires from the batteries are difficult to control with conventional extinguishing methods. Lithium fire can react with water, so firefighters had to use dry sand to extinguish the blaze, which took hours to get under control. In addition to this, there was also the fear that additional explosions would occur from those batteries. Please join us in not supporting these types of toxic advanced manufacturing plants in our backyard. Thank you.
Thank you. Jordan, do we have any other comments?
Yes, Mr. Chair, the next comment's been submitted by Bobby Walton of Davison, Michigan, and she'll be speaking on the subject of process and procedure.
Good evening. It's one of my usual subjects. Following is a reminder that the goal of Andy Everman is to control the Board of Trustees and through them to control the administration of Mott College. The public must be reminded from time to time of the ways in which we have witnessed this scheme. January 2023, I first became aware of what was happening and started to pay attention. I began attending board meetings and speaking to the Board in May of that year. I saw accusations that Everman, Couch, Swanson, and Walcott had violated the public right to government transparency protected by the Open Meetings Act. I began watching, and I gathered evidence. Here is what I know. James Delaney, former Board Attorney for Mott Board, came to the January 23rd, 2023 meeting of the new Mott College Board of Trustees. He stated on a video that he had been asked to come to the special meeting to assume the role of Board Attorney. He said he was invited and would be appointed by Andy Everman, Janet Couch, Jeff Swanson, and Wendy Walcott. He named them. I have with me a copy of the document that was used to call this meeting. The document is dated January 18th, 2023, and includes the signatures of the four trustees, Everman, Couch, Swanson, and Walcott. They gave the purpose of the meeting as to appoint Board Legal Counsel as the attorney who will advocate for the Board of Trustees. Further, they declare the meeting is to vote, to have the Board Attorney call the organizational meeting to order and act as chair as new Board leadership is selected. The reason for this special meeting was given by Everman as a way for the two new trustees to participate in the selection of the Board Attorney, who would have been James Delaney. So the plan was to fire Amber Brennan in the special meeting, have the two trustees vote with Everman and Couch to appoint James Delaney, and have Delaney sit in the chair while the new officers were selected, all four officers. How convenient that the four trustees who signed the document calling the special meeting were also the four chosen to be the officers of the new Board. You're familiar with the Open Meetings Act. You know this is a clear violation of the Act. Not only did the four collude to call the meeting, but they contacted Delaney and offered him the job. Everman knew policy and procedures were not being followed, but he counted on the innocence of the two new Board members, Swanson and Walcott, to support his plan. Four members of the seven Board member is a quorum. The document I have is evidence the four colluded to take action once the meeting took place. Further, they sought to dismiss the attorney who was advocating for the Board and replace her with Mr. Delaney. The two new members of the Board were snookered by Andy Everman. He even got them to elect him as chair. Everman's plan to have his own attorney serve him as the Board Attorney finally succeeded in April of 2023, when he was able to get Amber Brennan fired as Board Attorney. Amber Brennan was fired under specious accusations and suspicious circumstances. She represented the whole Board. It seems Everman wanted someone to speak for and advise only him and his interest. After pushing for several months to hire an attorney who had already represented him, William Brickley, Everman was successful. Last week, I showed you the evidence of behind-the-scenes coordination of the vote of the four, which took place in December of 2023. William Brickley's stated legal specialty is arbitration and personal injury. William Brickley's stated legal specialty is arbitration and personal injury, not higher education law, which is why I keep reminding the public of this. The public is watching, but sometimes they need to be reminded. Now we're watching you go through the process of bringing a new college president to Mott College. I'm not the only one who watches with an uneasy feeling of mistrust. How can we trust? For this reason, I call on more of the concerned public to come forth and let this board know your concerns and your desires to keep Mott College going forward. Stop the nonsense and bring some dedicated, someone dedicated to building on the excellent work of our retiring president of the last ten years, Dr. Beverly Walter Gaffia. And thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Jordan, do we have any other comments?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have one more comment that's been submitted by Sean Murray of Flint, and on the topic of board conduct. Hello, Board of Trustees. This letter is twofold. First, to address the constituent concerns about the hiring process for the interim president, et cetera. Secondly, repeatedly calling meetings without sufficient notice in closed-session meetings. As far as hiring an interim president or president is concerned, the Overview of Open Meetings Act, impact on presidential search, there are several points of concern. Under OMA, general, all deliberation and decisions of a public body are to be made at a public meeting. All decisions and deliberations in filling the position must be made at a meeting open to the public. Deliberations are any decision or exchange of views. Subcommittee, a screening subcommittee is considered a public body, subject to OMA. Screening of candidates must be done in public. Interviews, all interviews by a public body for this position must be held in an open meeting. Although the public does not have the right to question candidates during the interview, they must be provided an opportunity to comment under rules established and recorded by the public body. In addition, under Board Policy Fifty-Six Hundred, Section Two, it states that the Office of Human Resources must create a system for the hiring and the contracting for human resources. All hiring must be regulated through the Office of Human Resources. It appears as if the board is trying to circumvent Mott's capable and experienced human resource department, for example, trying to figure out how to conduct background checks. This is outside of the board's scope. The extensive discussion on background checks at the June twelfth, twenty-twenty-four meeting was a waste of time and resources. Let the experts do their job without your interference in the process. As it relates to a scheduled regular or special meeting under fifteen dot two-six-seven, a roll call of two-thirds vote, roll call vote of members elected or appointed is required to call a closed session, except for the closed sessions permitted under eight A, B, C, G, I, J. The roll call vote and the purpose of, and the purpose or purposes for calling the closed session shall be entered into the minutes of the meeting. Lastly, the Board Policy Five Eight One Three, civility encourages and promotes an environment of civility and mutual respect. It is expected that behavior which substantially interferes with and creates an intimidating and hostile environment will be avoided, including bullying, harassing conduct. Once again, Andy Everman, your behavior was out of line throughout the meeting, beginning with the public comments, and through the meeting, including the dialogue with Rebecca Martz from Human Resources. This is not a dictatorship, and despite what you may believe, you are not an authoritarian. Your, your behavior is unacceptable and unwarranted. The very basic policy, Fifty-Eight Thirteen, civility is expected, and this includes your behavior, Andy Everman.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments?
No, Mr. Chair, that concludes public comments.
Thank you. We now would entertain a motion to go into closed session. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
Mr. Chair, I make the motion to go into closed session, and the purpose for this is for strategy and negotiation sessions connected with the negotiation of collective bargaining agreements, and to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute, namely, excuse me, namely attorney-client privilege information.
Do you have a second for the motion?
Second.
You have a second. Roll call vote. Mr. Reyes?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
No.
Mrs. Couch?
Yes.
Dr. Daley?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Jordan, what were the votes?
With six ayes and one nay, the motion passed. You are now entering closed session.
Thank you. We will leave you now, and we're going to go into another room and have our discussion. Thank you.
Mic check, one, two, three. Mic check, one, two, three. Check. Mic check, one, two, three. Check, check. Check, one, two, check. 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 Check, one, two, three, four, five. Check, one, two, three, four, five.
Check one, two, three, four, five. Check one, two, three, four, five.
...
The board is back in session. I would entertain a motion to amend the agenda.
I make a motion to end the agenda and move things forward.
Okay. Motion will be adjourned with the assistance of Jason. We need a second that can be...
Can you restate that, please?
I want to make a motion to end the agenda and move things forward.
To end the agenda and move things forward?
Mm-hmm.
Amend the agenda to what?
To... A motion to end the agenda and move things forward.
Amend the agenda. Amend the agen...
Amen.
Amend the agenda.
Amen.
Mr. Chair, point of order.
Yes.
Have you brought us back into session yet?
Yeah, I brought you back into session before we started. Okay, Jason's going to help us because there's items that we must get done this evening.
Mr. Chair, there has been no second to that motion. So trustee Couch motion to amend the agenda and move things forward. Trustee Swanson seconded the motion.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Nays?
Nay.
I believe we have six to one.
I believe you should do a roll call vote on that.
Roll call.
I'm sorry, Jordan.
I believe you should do a roll call vote on that.
Roll call vote. Art?
No.
What? Michael?
No.
Sue?
Yes.
Dr. Daly?
No.
Wendy?
Can you tell me what we're amending on here?
So Jason's going to assist us so that we get through the items that are required to be done this evening because we have a list that must be taken care of tonight. We have the budget approval would be one of them. We'll have the M and O contract. We'll have the faculties contract. We have... Could you help me? We have a budget hearing that must be done this evening. Treasurers report approval of tax mileage, approval of the final budget, initial budget for adoption, employee computer workstation purchase, and schedule for regular meetings.
Mr. Chair, Jason was trying to say something.
Yeah, I was just going to go over the items that do need to get done tonight. He hit most of them. We do want to hear from the auditors. The auditor's opinion needs to be reported to you tonight. Down to new business, we do need to have the public hearing on the proposed budget. Items 2.12 through...
2.17?
2.17 need to be done tonight. And then items 2.25 and 2.26 need to be done tonight. I also by law need to submit the end of the year summary report for the college to the
Mr. Rass?
Should we reconsider your eight o'clock hard stop?
We can, but right now we have a motion on the floor and we're voting...
This is part of the discussion though because that eight o'clock hard stop is what got us into this mess where we're having to rush through all of this stuff to begin with.
Okay, I appreciate the discussion, but let's get through this.
We've started the vote. Sorry, is there something else you find humorous?
Yeah.
Thank you. Please look at 1325 in your policy manual. It will assist you with it.
Is smiling out of order in this meeting?
Disrespect for the fellow board members, yes.
I was smiling.
Very good. Your vote? Okay, and Wendy has left. And my vote is yes. What is our vote on this?
I think we should wait until trustee Walcott comes back.
Your vote, Wendy?
Yes.
Okay. Jordan?
So Mr. Chair, that is five ayes and two nays. The motion's passed.
The next item on the agenda therefore would be... Yes, Art?
I move we reconsider the hard stop at eight o'clock PM.
Very good. Reconsideration?
Mm-hmm.
Would you like to change your vote?
No, I voted...
You voted?
Against. Against. Yep, you're right, I can't make that motion. But we're not going to get done by eight o'clock.
I know. So we need somebody that voted yes for that to want to change their motion, their vote.
I'll change my vote.
Okay. And we have a second one. Okay. So at this point, Art?
Yeah?
Need your assistance.
Okay, a motion needs to be made by somebody who voted in the majority to reconsider.
That's right.
I'll make it.
We've got it made. We got a motion to reconsider.
I'll make a motion that we stay get what needs, absolutely needs to be done.
Okay. And do we have a second?
Second.
And we got a second from Wendy. Okay. Now, we have a roll call vote.
Could you restate that, trustee Swanson?
The motion is that we do not close the meeting without getting the immediate business that has to be done tonight. We'll get that finished. Does that cover?
Does that work?
The items that he recited as the agenda items that need to be redone tonight should be incorporated.
For your motion, we're also going to have to have Jason restate the items that need to go through tonight. So, Jason? We have...
Special presentations.
Item number seven.
Right, item number seven, special presentation required by auditor, that special presentation. Item 10, under new business, public hearing proposed 2024-2025 operating budget. New business individual items 2.12 through 2.17. And... New business individual items 2.12 through 2.17, and individual items 2.25 and 2.26. And under...
President's report.
President's report item 12, end of the year report. Those are my items.
We have a second, roll call vote.
Mr. Chair, can I restate it? So, to go back to your motion, trustee Swanson, would you like it to read, "Do not close the meeting at 8:00 PM until immediate business has been included. Items include the required auditor communication with those charged with governance. Under new business, item 2.12 treasurer's report for May 2024 through 2.17, which is schedule of regular meetings for 2024 and 2025. Then item 2.25, approval of maintenance, operational, collective bargaining agreement. And item 2.26, approval of Mock Community College Education Association Faculty Collective Bargain Agreement. And end of the year report under the president's report." Would you like that to be your motion?
Please.
Okay.
Wendy, did you second that? Okay. Roll call vote. Art?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Passes unanimously. Next item we take up is a special presentation, the required auditor. Jason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to call Michelle Fowler and Krista Augustino, I think I pronounced that right, Chris, to give the audit for the board.
Okay, thank you. So, good evening, again, I'm Michelle Fowler, this is Krista Augustino. You had received in your board packets the required communications that we need to make to the board for the upcoming audit for the college for fiscal 2024. And so I'm going to go through, and I am going to go through that professional services plan for the audit. On page one, we have indicated there the scope of the services, which are similar to what they were in the prior year. So we will be auditing the financial statements of the college, which also include the discreetly presented component unit, the foundation for Mock Community College. And also is part of our engagement, we do a separate audit for the federal awards programs that the college receives. Also, I wanted to point out that the professional services plan that you have in your packet includes information for a standalone separate audit that we do for the foundation for its financial statements. Those components are going to be presented to the foundation finance committee this Wednesday. So the items that I'm going to highlight through here are going to be specific to the college. I also wanted to point out on page two at the top, we also indicate in addition to the audit report for the financial statements and the single audit, we also have a letter that goes through and summarizes the results of the audit. So that will also be in writing, and so that will be our required communications for results of audit, as well as if there are any internal control matters that we need to report. So that will all happen when the audit is complete. And then also continuing on page two, we have all of the due dates for the upcoming audit. So we will be providing draft reports in the middle of October, so by no later than October 14th. All of those documents that I just mentioned for the college will be provided to management at the middle of October. And then if you look at the top of page three, you can see when we're going to be issuing the final reports. And so that will be happening no later than October 21st. And then also, once the audit is complete, the college is required to upload that reporting package to the federal government. And so that needs to be done within 30 days. And then moving on on that same page, the timing of the services, we started our planning fieldwork last week. We're also on campus this week doing our interim procedures for those federal awards programs that I had mentioned. And then as of the end of the year, we'll be doing separate verification for things such as cash, investments, other items. So we have that listed here where we do verify that with third parties. And then we will be back middle of September to the end of September to complete our final And then if you could please look to page five of the document at the very top, we do have indicated there as part of our audit, we are required to go through and assess for the risk of fraud. And we want to make sure that for this current year audit, that we are accommodating the board's request, that each board member has that opportunity for us to make those required inquiries and any other concerns that the board members may have. And so you will see on page nine of the same document has all of our contact information. And so I'm just requesting that you have my email, you have my phone number. If you could please let me know, what is the best way or the preferred way that you want us to make that initial contact to go through those required inquiries? And then you'll have the option, some people like to just fill out a questionnaire, some people like to have an in-person meeting, we can do a virtual meeting, we can do a phone call, whatever needs to happen to make sure that we are going through those procedures. And we should have plenty of time to get all of that coordinated and executed before we come back and start that final fieldwork in the middle of September. And then, or if you just prefer, I had spoken with Jordan Kaiser in his role as the board liaison, and if you just want to go through him and he can tell us how we can best reach Okay. The only other thing that I, I wanted to point out, no changes in what we have initially for the significant risks for the audit. We have the two presumed risks for override of internal controls by management, and also improper revenue recognition. So those are included. No changes from last year. Also, no new accounting pronouncements that are going to be impacting the college for fiscal 2024. So we don't have to have anything to talk about there. And then at the very end of the document, starting on the bottom of page seven, and then continuing onto page eight, there are some new auditing standards that we have to follow as the CPA firm. So there's SaaS 143 regarding estimates, and 145 regarding risk assessment. So we have information in there for you. So those are just additional procedures and documentation that we're required to do under generally accepted auditing standards for this year. And as I had mentioned before, the final page has the contact information, myself, Chris, other key people who service the college, if for some reason you need to have direct access to us and contact us. And that concludes our formal presentation.
Are there any questions?
Thank you, any questions?
Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
VP Wilson, do you have an announcement as it relates to the proposed 2024-25 initial budget for adoption?
Yes, I do. For this portion, I'd like to call up CFA, CFO A. Gothrop. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for this portion of the agenda. I would like to open the meeting for anyone in the public who wishes to comment on the college's proposed 24-25 operating budget that has been brought forth to the board for their consideration. CFOAO Gothrop is also prepared to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jason. So, I would like to go over, and we did go through this in detail in the committee meetings, and then I, and we met with you individually as well, but just briefly, I didn't prepare any slides, the same slide deck that you had before. Just understand that we are required, you as a board in the college, to adopt a final 23-24 budget, an initial 24-25 budget, and then the operating and debt mileage authorizations. So the final 23-24 budget is showing an overall upward amendment to revenues and transfers of 1.3 million or 1.43%. And this is due to the following. As I explained to you in the committee meetings and individually, the May treasurer's report, at the February amended budget, an overestimation of tuition and fees occurred with a resulting offset to the transfer from future funding, excuse me. This is being corrected in the final budget. Property taxes revenues are up $454,000 from what we originally amended. And then the state aid is being adjusted upward by $663,000. Expenditures, the budget is being adjusted upward by 2.2 million or 2.5% based on the following. Salaries and fringes are being increased 2.5 million as a result of the lump sum and higher lump sum payment, and the part-time adjunct hourly faculty higher pay due to the increased enrollment and higher section counts that we've experienced. Materials and supplies are being adjusted upward $169,000. Operations and communications is being reduced by $195,000, and this is due to the emergency, remaining emergency contingency being released. Transfers out of the general fund is being reduced $125,000, as loss was required to be transferred to the designated funds. The net effect of these changes results in a final surplus of just over $315,000. Net asset percentage is 15.9%, which is within the board policy of the 20. For the, for the 24-25 budget, there are four board policies governing the college budget process, budget adoption, financial stability, fiscal reserves, and compensation philosophy. Also, in addition to that, we do have the college works toward the following in the budget development process, supporting the strategic plan, minimize offset impact on students, avoid overall reduction in staffing, build fund balances and reserves, maintain financial flexibility, and a balanced approach. Our three main revenue sources, as you know, the three-legged stool is tuition first at the highest percent that we have, followed by property taxes, and then state aid. And then we do have other, which is comprised of mainly from Ballenger Trust, our investment earnings, and then also the transfer in from future funding. So, just as a note, we have of our three funding sources, from 1999-2000, it has changed dramatically. We are much more reliant on tuition. We're at 43%, excuse me, this year we're 41%. In the past years, we're, prior to the pandemic, we were at 43%. So that, as that HER funding is used up, the remaining HER funding, that will have to be made up with tuition. Property taxes are our second largest funding source, and have finally reached the levels that they were back in 2009, 2010, after the Great Recession. The total loss in property taxes cumulatively for those 15 years was nearly $60 million. Our property taxes, as you may know, are collected through the various local township, cities, and villages, and remitted to the college once collected. Any delinquencies are turned over to the county for collection. We are required, the college is required to set an operating and debt mileage rate for each year based on the calculations from the county assessor's office, and our bond financial consultants help us with the debt side. So our operating mileage this year is 1.9365, the debt is .6000. The operating mileage did have a reduction of .0073 as required under the Headley Amendment. And then also, there has been questions brought up in the past about how the college can make itself whole and not be affected by the Headley. This would require board action and consent of the voters of the district at an election. Another possibility, of course, we talked about, is the annexation of LaPierre. We have tried this in the past and not been, not been successful. Moving on, the college expense, biggest expense category, as expected, is salaries and wages and contracted personnel. Board policy 5100 does state that the college salaries, wages, and benefits should not exceed 77% of the operating budget. And in spirit, with keeping the board policy for our all compensation, compensation-related expenses, we monitor and track both employee and contracted and temporary help. And since 2015, both employee, employee wages and benefits and all compensation-related expenses are below the 77% requirement. Some key assumptions for the 24-25 budget, we are seeing a decrease, decrease of 2.2 million in tuition and fees. This is, we're doing this because of the conservative approach of budgeting from the ending 22-23 year, instead of taking this past year's increases. This was offset by the 3.1% in tuition that was approved by the board. We are expecting a 5% increase in property taxes based on the latest information from the Genesee County Assessor's Office. We are anticipating a less than inflationary 2% increase from the state of Michigan. I did speak with our lobbyists today. The budget is still not done. They're hoping to get it done by the end of this week before they recess. And as a side note to that as well, I did ask about the construction authorization for the Prowl project. He said that that has not been something that they had taken any action on or wanted to move. They're trying to work on the regular budget. They have two state schedules in July, and then two dates in August where they're going to reconvene. So hopefully they will take it up at that point in time, and we cannot start the construction, any construction expenditures until we receive that. The general fund expenditures for the 24-25 budget, based on the following comparison, for 23-24, salaries and fringes are increased $1.7 million, and that's mainly because we restore the, and fund all of the authorized open positions for the current year, and that's also coupled with a 2% across the board increase. Materials and supplies are reduced $395,000 on an overall reduction in instructional and general office supplies. Rent and utilities and insurance has increased $476,000 due in large part to the scheduled lease increases in the Culinary Arts Building, which we will own at the end of this year. Operations communications is being increased $656,000 due to a restoration of the emergency contingency increases and the ITS licenses that was approved last month, the SaaS conversion. Transfers out is being reduced by $533,000 as capital funding reserves or 72 and 78 accounts are at the top end of the requirements. So, at, with the incorporation of all these items, the 24-25 initial budget shows total revenues and transfers at $91 million, total expenditures and transfers out of $90.8 million, final surplus of just over $250,000, and our net asset percent still at 15.9%. The college has several other smaller budgets, the designated fund and auxiliary funds. We are anticipating a $200,000 surplus in auxiliary funds, which will be returned to support the general fund. And then also the debt retirement fund, we are required by law to budget that separately, keep those monies separate. But again, those are anticipated tax revenues that we'll receive in the scheduled interest and principal payments on our outstanding debt. So that completes the 23-24 final budget, 24-25 initial budget, and the military rate authorization.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, thank you very much, Larry.
Thank you. So nothing new really to report on the treasurer's report. Everything was trending as expected outside of the tuition and fees that, offer statement that we made in the amended budget. We noticed that when we were reconciling February, so that's what we noticed and made the adjustment in the final budget.
Is there a motion to accept the treasurer's report?
So moved.
So moved. Is there a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Item 2.13, approval of the tax mileage rate. Larry, you're up again. Larry, you're up again.
Yeah, I covered that in my last report. I can go over it again if you'd like.
No, just, are there any questions?
Okay.
Are there any questions from the trustees? We have a motion for item 2.13.
Move to comply.
Got a motion, and do we have a second?
Second.
And we've got a second. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Approval of final budget proposal, item 2.14. Do we have a motion to do that?
Make the motion.
Have a second? Have we have a second? Are there any questions or discussion?
Mr. Chair, was that trustee Reyes that seconded the motion? Okay.
For item 2.14?
Correct.
I thought it was Wendy and Dr. Daly, but if it was John first...
Trustee Reyes seconded the motion.
Okay, all right. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Item 2.15, initial budget for adoption. Is there a motion for that?
Make the motion.
Is there a second? And we have a second from Dr. Daly. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Employee computer workstation purchase award. Jason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to call up acting CTO, a lot of acronyms tonight, Randy Shappel for a brief presentation.
Hello.
Sorry about that. Thank you, thank you. So, good evening, trustees. My name is Randy Shappel. I'm the acting CTO for Mott Community College. I'm presenting the employee computer replacements resolution. You may remember this project was part of the bond presentation that was presented to the board this past February. The Mott Community College employees use their college-provided computers to perform numerous tasks every day. These tasks can be complicated as building classroom presentation material by our faculty or as simple as sending an email. Employee computers need to be replaced roughly every five years. This resolution is for Windows-based mobile devices. We are recommending replacement of the employee computers to provide stable computing experience for our faculty and staff. Is there any questions?
Do we have a motion for item 2.16?
Make the motion.
Do we have a second?
Support.
We've got a second. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion passed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Schedule for regular meetings, 2.17. Is there a motion to adjop the agenda for the regular meetings? Item 2.17.
Second.
Okay. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, it passed. Item 2.25, approval of MNO contract. Jordan?
Mr. Chair, can we go back on a couple things? So trustee Wolcott motioned to approve item 2.17. Trustee Daly seconded the motion.
Other way around.
Other way around, okay. Thank you. Who was the trustee who seconded the motion?
I was.
Trustee, okay. And then for item 2.12, trustee Reyes moved to accept the Treasuries report for May, and trustee Wolcott seconded the motion.
Item 2.25, approval of maintenance and operation collective bargaining runits.
I move approval as amended.
And we have, do we have a second?
Support.
And we have support. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Art?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And myself, yes. The contract approves. Item 2.26, approval of faculty contract. Is there a motion to approve this contract?
Sue moved.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Art?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And myself, yes. It has passed. Jordan? Jason? The next item?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jordan, you need help or you got them? Okay. So Jordan is passing out the end-of-the-year report. This is submitted on behalf of Dr. Beverly. I want to briefly go through this to be in compliance with state law. And I'll wait for everyone to get a binder. So I'm going to cover the accomplishments in reference to the current strategic plan by goal, and those that are in bold for you will be the items that I cover. Starting with goal one, improving student success. The college, as you've heard all year, has been strong in enrollment. I laid out the numbers for you in your report, 7.8, 12.4, 8.2. You've heard me talk about those types of increases. What we need to do is submit a final 12-month snapshot to Department Education, their iPads database, and we're compiling that number. I can tell you from a preliminary standpoint, the data that I've seen, the college over a 12-month period is looking at about a 5 to almost 520 student increase over 12 months. So congratulations to everybody who's worked on that. It's really important. One of the great things about increasing your enrollment and increasing your completion is you also increase the wide net of who you serve. And so I was informed two weeks ago that Mott Community College has now been denoted as an emerging Hispanic-serving institution. That means that, in essence, we are at the threshold of having 25 percent of our total enrollment be made up of Hispanic students. That is amazing. We also are leading the state in the number of reconnect scholarships that we are awarding to our students at about 23 percent. We certainly want to move higher in that, but we are engaging adults who want to come back to school. Your hands are going to get tired if you clapped on the front. Goal two, we continue to do well under the leadership of Carla Clark and the Family Life Mott eats, Mott eats spends anywhere from $3,000 to $3,500 a month on food. We average about 200 visits from students using that service. Ellen's Closet is averaging, that's our clothing closet, averaging about 28 visits per month. So we continue to do well in serving our students. And new this year, we started an advisory committee, nine members, and they have really been a value add to helping us shape kind of direction and connection to the community. Goal three, maintaining a positive work environment. Several things we've done there, a couple of things to highlight. We've established a data governance committee focused on really the fidelity of our data and institutional reporting that informs our strategic decision-making. And we've also worked to establish MCC leadership councils that have been providing recommendations to the executive cabinet and the president to improve the employee experience. Goal four, expanding professional development opportunities. We have expanded our orientation, new employee orientation from one day to three days, including diversity, equity, inclusion, and civility training. We also have provided a one-day refresher orientation for those who've transferred or have been promoted. And in the space of giving current employees professional growth opportunities, we've hired internally acting interim positions in ITS, students' academic success, and procurement areas. So congratulations to those acting and interim employees. Goal five, enhancing employee wages and benefits. Four, position market studies were done this year. Market survey for MNO was done. As you heard, the contract was passed in terms of understanding how to bring those salaries up to market. That's it for that one. Goal six, so you got me waiting now for claps. Goal six, expand academic and course degree options. MCC completed a successful Perkins audit with no findings or recommendations. That's for our instructional programs and special population programs that are funded by Perkins dollars. And something that we're excited about that's coming up this Wednesday, the Workforce and Economic Development Division is hosting a Future of Work Symposium. This is this Wednesday from 8 to 4. This is designed to equip leaders with the knowledge and tools needed to navigate the rapidly evolving job market. So shout out to Robert and his team. Goal seven, enhance teaching and teaching methods and modes. Faculty continue to do yeoman's work in leading the college and leading their own rank-and-file in professional development. They led 11 communities of practice, which are really cohorts of learning on various topics. I've included that, those topics in your binder where you can see that. Goal eight, expanding faculty development. MCC's Center for Teaching and Learning, shout out to Jennifer Fish-Ferguson there, has held over, or almost three, well, over 370 individual and group sessions on various topics. I included a newsletter in your binder. She's doing an amazing job, really expanding the breadth of development that occurs at the college. Goal nine, increasing workforce partnerships. As you know, the college continues to be a strong agency for creating those employer partnerships. We engaged in 30-plus new employer partnerships for this year alone. And also of note, you may recall, we launched the MCC Workforce Promise a few years ago. The total numbers that I'd report on that, 27 partnering companies, 791 students, 557 badges were earned, and 65 students completed all of the badges, and 45 students have earned the full Workforce Promise endorsement. So right right there. We got three more. Goal 10, focus on student and career preparation. Mott has increased the number of non-credit students transitioning over to credit programs. That again is a collaboration between academics and workforce. We are up about 2 percent, but it's important to note that right now, the total makeup of, or in our credit enrollment, workforce graduates make up approximately 13 percent of that enrollment. So they're doing well there. Last two, expanding presence in the community. Everyone obviously was a big part of the centennial celebration. That really dominates a lot of this part of the report. I'm sorry, that's in goal 12. Goal 11, Mott sponsored 56 community and nonprofit events amongst other things in terms of expanding our presence in the community. And then, as I said, goal 12, more than 5,000 people attended the centennial-related events as we celebrated the centennial. The remaining documents really highlight by area different successes that all of the areas have. On behalf of the president, she is thrilled with the work that continues to be done at the college and really looks forward to continuing to champion and partner Mott Community College in her new role. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Jason. Next item on the agenda. We still have to accomplish a couple of things. One, we have to have a interim, interim president seated by July 1. Therefore, I'm going to ask the attorney how we can wordsmith a motion so that we can temporarily place VP Wilson in the position of interim interim chair, excuse me, interim interim president, so that until we get everything completed, we have a president, acting president for us. So could you help us with this?
The language proposed would be that you would appoint an interim interim for the time period reasonably necessary to have an interim in place during the search for a permanent president.
If I could, Mr. Chair, acting is the proper term, just acting. They're going to tease me if we call, if I'm called interim, acting is the appropriate term.
And, Mr. Chair, you would need a motion to amend the agenda to add this item.
Okay. I need a motion to amend the agenda to add the item to appoint an acting interim president. Do we have a motion to amend the agenda to add this?
So moved.
Second.
We have a second. Do we have any discussion? Do a roll call vote. Do a roll call vote. Dr. Daley?
Mr. Chair, can we get that motion restated?
It would be a motion to appoint an acting interim president for a time period reasonably necessary until an interim is in place.
So Trustee Reyes made the motion to amend the agenda with that, with the motion that the Attorney just stated. Trustee Wolcott seconded the motion.
There was no discussion, correct? Okay. Roll call vote. Dr. Daley?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Art?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Unanimously, congratulations. You're the acting interim president as of July 1. Thank you. Okay. I've called two meetings for later this week. Yes, Art? Though it wasn't put on the agenda, you had attempted to, we were going to name the five finalists? Yes, that will require a motion too.
I so move.
We have a motion to name the five candidates to be interviewed for the interim president. We have a support. Is there any discussion? When we name them, we would also like to have them placed on the college website as soon as practical. And we have a second.
We only have four at this point. We only have four.
We have four. How do you know that?
We were, we were informed that we only have four candidates now.
I'm sorry, John, I couldn't.
We were informed by HR that one of the candidates.
Okay. They haven't talked to me.
You were.
You were in the meeting, Mr. Chair.
What's that? Anyways, we have four candidates that we'll put on the website. Okay. That's the motion.
So Trustee Reyes made the motion to be five, so it would be Trustee Reyes' motion to announce the four candidates for interim president. Trustee Swanson seconded the motion.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Art?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Could we now name them? We need the person for personnel to come up to do that.
Okay. So we have, can you hear me? Four finalists. The first one is Dr. Brent Knight. Next one is Dr. Diana Phillips. Next one is Jason Wilson. And the fourth is Shonda Richardson-Snell. Shonda Richardson-Snell.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We had a total of 25 candidates that applied, correct? And the folder that they gave us for the public that doesn't know, everything was sequenced with alphabet letters. We had some very, very good candidates, and I'm sure the Human Resource Personnel Committee had difficulty in selecting the five. So thank, thank both of you for doing that. Thank you. John, do you have a question?
Just something for my colleagues to think about between now and the end of the week, and that's that we started this back with timelines that I think each of us thought were going to be completed sooner. And my real question at this point is, since we have now decided to move ahead with a, an acting president, do we want to continue moving forward with an interim? And rather than, and just go to directly to where the main effort should be, I feel, is that's in the concentration of finding a president.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, Michael?
Yeah. I actually think, given the task ahead of us, what Trustee Daley has said is actually spot-on and accurate. And we won't have any disruption with the fall semester because this is going to take longer than a couple months. So I actually echo the sentiments of Dr., or of Dr. Daley, and hopefully we can move forward appropriately and transparently.
Any other comments? So we have two meetings later this week. It will look like, at this point, we are not prepared to go into either one of those meetings. Because we would have to have our questions prepared unless the board decides that you want to stay this evening and go through that process to prepare, and then we can contact the four candidates. What is the pleasure of the board? Would you like to move forward with creating the questions as well as the process in which we would interview candidates?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Brickley had asked all of us a few times now. I'm not sure who all had submitted questions in. I had submitted my questions in and got them approved to make sure legally they were okay to ask. I'm not sure who else did. But I think that all the questions that we ask should be the same questions for every single candidate.
Okay. Is that a motion? Is that a motion? Because of everything we've had happen so far, to make sure that we're following the process, if that's a motion, please make it.
I can make a motion. I'll make a motion that the questions we ask the four candidates are all the same.
Okay. Do we have a second for that? Do we have any discussion? Do we have any discussion?
Right here.
Oh. Please, Mr. Chair.
So that's, that's kind of a self-evident motion. I mean, I understand what you're saying, but also, we have to do that. Like, it's not even a, I mean, we wouldn't have the option of doing that because we're actually, we'd violate, you know, employment law. So we have to do all, everything consistently in the same. So it's, you know, it's just by nature of the interview process, it has to be all the same.
Yes, John?
I'd really like for the board to seriously consider the idea that we've all talked, and each of us has talked individually to other members in, on an informational basis about the amount of time a search requires and the effort that's put into it. And especially with the changing timetable that we've had associated with filling the President's position, again, it is, it is really not clear to me that we need to spend that amount of time and personnel energy from the board and the staff on a search for an interim that's going to be replaced again within four to six months is the target. And to me, I think, to be very candid, I think the college would be better served if we concentrated on our principal focus, which is finding a president.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor. Is there any discussion on that motion? Wendy had made a motion. Jeff had seconded it.
So.
Not Mr. Daley. Wendy had made a motion. You had seconded.
Yep. So Trustee Wolcott's motion, or motion that the questions, the questions the board asked the four candidates are all the same. Would you like that to say interim president candidates? And Trustee Swanson seconded the motion.
We've had discussion. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Others in favor? Art?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Sue?
Aye.
John?
Aye, with the provision that I, I think we still need to keep the door open, particularly when we get to the end of the interview process where we know the candidate, to be able to ask questions that are maybe specific to that candidate's experience.
Wendy?
Yes.
Jeff?
Aye.
And myself, yes. That motion has passed. The time that we allow for each candidate to go through the interview process, Human Resources had made a suggestion of an hour and 15 minutes with five minutes for each question, which would work out to each trustee asking two questions. Is there a motion to set the timeframe for an hour and 15 minutes? Two questions from each trustee? Yes, Jeff?
Mr. Chair, I believe we had a motion that passed listing what, what we were going to go through, and that wasn't on the list.
We, we did this in the Personnel Committee, and we did it here as well, the last meeting. So it was an hour and 15 minutes, two questions per trustee.
Two questions per trustee. Okay. So. That motion, we don't need.
Great.
Yes, John?
I move we discontinue the search for an interim president so that we can concentrate on the search for a replacement for the final president.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? Roll call vote. Art?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jeff?
No.
No? I think your microphone didn't come on.
I said no.
Okay. Wendy?
No.
Sue?
No.
And myself, no. The motion failed. We will move forward with looking for an interim president. The process which we will follow for going through.
Mr. Chair, can we go back to Trustee Daley's motion? So you, Trustee Daley motioned to discontinue the search for the interim president. Could you complete that motion?
My motion was to discontinue the search for an interim president so that we could concentrate on finding a permanent candidate for president.
Thank you.
Did you get everything you need?
Yes.
So the board will have to have a committee to put together a contract for this. So I would entertain a motion. Yes, Jeff? Okay. So we would have to have three people, the attorney and somebody from the administration.
Mr. Chair, point, point of order. When we did the amendment to the agenda, this was not one of the items that we considered an emergency. And so this is not on the current agenda. We suspended everything else at, at your request. So at this point in time, I would say that we move to adjourn this meeting.
We have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
We have a second. Roll call vote. Art?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Myself, yes. The meeting is adjourned.